All right, item five, work session. Start out with the budget discussion. Turn it over to you, Murad.
Yes, sir, and Katina is prepared to give you all a brief update from the presentation you received last month.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our objective, as Murad mentioned, was to give a very high-level update on the proposed budget. Since our last meeting, we received certified values from Harris County. At that time, we did not have certified values from Harris County, only from Galveston County. As a result of that information that was provided to us, we have additional revenue of about $124,000 that would be included in our general fund. So, in talking with the city manager and discussing what we could do or fund with that additional monies, we have two of the unfunded decision packages that we are proposing to include in the proposed budget. That's two full-time positions. One, in the administrative services department, it's an administrative assistant position, and then also a full-time parks laborer. We also... Yes?
How did you guys determine of the unfunded packages which ones were going to push above the line?
That was the decision.
The decision packages that were presented to council last month, as well as in the proposed budget, included the rankings as determined by city staff. Each... You may recall, staff has a longstanding tradition of vetting every department's decision package for their operational services, and those are ranked by the department directors, independent of their own items. And as a group collectively, where those rankings fall determine what's presented to council when it comes to a decision package standpoint. Those two items were at the top of the list, save and accept another one that was slightly higher but wasn't sufficient to fund it in its entirety.
Please.
Can you give us a justification for the administrative assistant position and the parks laborer, and why they were up at the top?
Based on staff's rankings, collectively, all the department directors voted on the decision package list, and those were the two that fell towards the... Or ended up towards the top. The justification for the positions for administrative services, they had an admin assistant position years ago, but they did away with the position to help budget pressure. A few years ago, we had a history of adopting effective tax rate, which was... And I'm not criticizing, that was a good choice at the time. But in an effort to reduce the pressures on the budget, they forewent that position to help out another department. The parks laborer, as you heard tonight with the dog park, as well as a number of other parks, we've added additional facilities to the city's repertoire of facilities to maintain, and it's one of the positions that we're lacking in being able to keep up with all the services. The rankings are based off of senior staff working collaboratively. It's not the decision of Katina nor myself as to what appears at the top of that list.
And if... No other question? In addition to those two positions, we also, in developing the proposed budget, we include... Always include the... Or a portion of the donations that are received at the senior center. And this year, when we did the expenditure side of that budget, of the budget, we did not include $5,000 to offset those revenues that we anticipate getting, so we needed to make that adjustment as well. So, those are the adjustments that were made. And as a result, overall, our additional planned use of fund balance went from 476,000 in the general fund to about 484,000. So, there is a difference of about $8,000 to fund those items and keep the budget balanced. Moving on. Total revenues in the budget now are reflected at 79.5 million. This includes the increase of the $124,000. No other changes were made to any of the other revenue sources included in the proposed budget. Our total expenditures are also reflect... Also reflect an increase of about 133,000. That's the two positions and that additional $5,000. No other expenditures were adjusted in any way.
500,000 for roads is in there?
Yes, sir.
And the cost of the drainage engineer we're going to get is in there?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Katina, just for clarifications, on the charges for services, they're 16 million, 505-919. That includes public works and water and sewer.
That does include our water and sewer utility fees.
Yeah, because I went through the budget that you all sent me, and I found the line items for everything, except for public works is not divided out on this, yet it is on the expense profile.
In the...
So, I was just making sure that I'm seeing numbers. The actual charges for services was 899,000. So, I had to go find 15 million, and that pretty much was easy enough to find it. But it would be nice, kind of, if we broke... If we have it on the expense side, we might want to have that on our revenue side, too, so we can actually see that revenue coming in.
And the 800,000 is the general fund side of the budget, and the delta, the 15 million, is on the water and sewer. Since it's separate funds, it's broken out differently in the budget itself, but you...
It is broken out differently, but it's not broken out differently on this slide.
Yes, sir.
On our general fund, actually, is... The general fund is what is adjusted due to the property tax revenue. Our debt service portion of the tax revenue doesn't change, or didn't change, with the additional revenue that would go to the maintenance and operations side. So, our general fund revenues are now reflected at 30.1 million versus the 30 million that was reflected last... In last month's presentation. Our property tax revenue is up about 1.2 million over last year's proposed budget, and this is a result of new construction being added to the tax rolls, as well as property value increases and the budget being developed, holding at the current tax rate.
Katina?
Yes, ma'am.
That sales tax number doesn't include the 4B1, right?
In the general fund, no, ma'am. That's reflected in separate funds.
Okay, thank you.
As mentioned, the proposed budget was developed, holding at the current tax rate of 53.24 cents per hundred-dollar valuation. Our estimated tax... Net taxable value is about 3.7 billion for this year. This is up in total about 210 million from last year to this year. Again, it includes our new construction. It also includes the over 65 freeze ceilings value and new construction, as well as the tax debt service obligation. Just wanted to remind everyone that our proposed budget does reflect the legislative changes related to how our building fees have to be calculated at this point going forward. Our general fund expenditures, our budget is... Still remains balanced, so our general fund expenditures are at 30.1 million. Our personnel changed from the presentation last month to 20.6 million, up from 20.5 million, and that is reflected there. You can see in green the two positions that we are proposing to add to the budget, and that includes salary and benefits, related benefits. Our non-personnel expenditures went up only about $5,000. That's reflective of the senior activity, community events. And our total decision packages are now 1.8 million in the proposed budget. Next slide, this is a list of our general fund decision packages. This is what is now proposed as funded in the proposed budget. Again, totals 1.8 million. No changes were made to the water and sewer fund revenues or expenses, so they both remain at 19.7 million. Mr. Grifon, this will reflect the 15 million that wasn't broken out on the slide there.
The use of working capital pushes that right up to 19.7.
Yes.
So, that was easy enough to see in the book. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Let's... Can I ask you a quick question? I brought this up with Mo and Stephen and Boyett. With the senior activities, community events, 5 to 5K, I was wondering, when we were talking about this over at the activity center, the monies that they have at the end of the year has to go back to the general fund. But my problem with that is there's a lot of people up here on the dais, as well as people in the community, who give money to the parks... I mean, to the senior activity center, and they don't expect that money to go anywhere but to the activities for those seniors. I know that Brent's donated, everybody up here has probably donated to several of their sponsored events. I just want to make sure that they get to continue a continuation budget, so that they don't have to send their money back at the end of the year, or at least have it spent. And then it puts a bad incentive in their mind, like, oh, we got to spend this or we lose it. And that's not what I think is the people who are sponsoring these activities want.
Any activities that are specifically donated to the senior center for a sponsorship of an event that is held at the senior center, that... Those funds are included in the proposed budget. Actually, as we develop the proposed budget, we estimate how much those donations would be, or sponsorships that come in, and that is appropriated and included, and that's the expenditure reflection, or what I was saying, that we needed to increase that by $5,000 in the proposed budget. Anything above that, if they... If... I believe it's $15,000 that we have appropriated for donations. If those donations exceed that amount, the senior act... We actually have on our budget amendment tonight, an additional appropriation of the funds that they've received above that amount. As mentioned, the water and sewer expenditures did not change from the original proposed budget that was presented, so they're holding at 19.7 million. This is our funded decision packages and forces at work in the water and sewer fund. As you can see, the total is about 5.3 million there. This is now our list of unfunded decision packages. This is... These are items that were proposed by the departments, but due to funding limitations, we were not able to include those in the proposed budget. And the next slide will reflect the water sewer fund unfunded decision packages.
Katina, are those rank ordered also?
Yes, ma'am. And the last slide is our next steps. We delivered the proposed budget to council July 31st. We held our first budget work session last month in August. We're holding our public hearing on the budget, the proposed budget this evening. It's on the agenda. That allows the public the opportunity to come and give input or feedback on the proposed budget. Our... Because we are... Because we develop the budget using the current tax rate, we will be required by legislation to have two public hearings on the proposed tax rate. So, we'll be asking for some action of council on that for this evening, and those public hearings would be held on... It would need to be special meetings, and they would need to be held September 23rd and 30th, so that we can meet the deadline to adopt the budget and the tax rate to support that budget on October 7th.
So, just for communication purposes, by adopting the current tax rate, the increase in revenue to the city is how much on a percentage basis? I think we talked about this last time.
It's a little... It's over 2%, but less than 3%. I don't have the exact percentage off the top of my head, but it's...
Just a little bit over 2% of an increase.
Correct.
I'd also like to say thanks. It took nine budget cycles, but we didn't get the Harry Carey chart with the red line crossing the blue line in four years, so appreciate your hard work in taking that out.
You're very welcome.
So, for those that don't know, we have a balanced budget requirement in our policy, and every budget cycle for the first eight...
Yes.
Had this line showing that they were going to somehow mysteriously cross and intersect, and we'd be upside down, which can never happen. So, thank you very much, and thank your team for all the work that you guys do. Y'all are magnificent.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I have one other question. In looking through the line items, the 2006 water and sewer construction bond, that's depleted away now, correct?
We are... If we're not, we're very close to...
And the 2009, right?
Yes, sir.
So, that should be depleted and off our books...
Yes, sir.
In this year.
We're spending... We're paying debt service, obviously, on those, because those were bonds issued to finance capital works projects on the water sewer side, but there shouldn't be any funds left in those.
Okay, very good. Because I was looking at that, and now we have the 2016s and the ones we issued in 2018. So, we're rolling off the 2006, and we're rolling off the 2009 in 2019. At least, that's what it said in the asterisks.
Correct. And but for posterity's sake, those funds will be reflected in the budget until such time that the debt's retired. But yes, there's no funds in there, and Katina's confirming. That's impressive.
Our debt service on those... The debt service, actually, on the water and sewer bonds for... We actually refinanced some of those, and...
In 2012 or '13, I remember.
10, 2010 and 2014, we refinanced those.
But those aren't funds that are sitting in the bank...
Right.
Waiting to be expended. We refinanced the debt to reduce the interest payment paid on that debt to save the ratepayers' money.
I don't think that's the funds that are being retained right now in that parks and works, in the water and general fund. That's like $22 million. That's mostly what we issued in 2018, if I looked at that right.
So, we issued...
I read it where the 2006 was being run off, wasn't refinanced. I have it marked.
Fund for 18 is our 20... Or 2006, and we are expecting to... We have about $43,000 left there. And then on the 20... Or 2009, we have 346, 338,000.
Which it said that should be expended in 2019.
Yes.
To pay off the debt, yes.
You're actually... Page 76 and page 77.
Thanks, Katina.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
I wanted to tell you guys, great job on this. I know it's very difficult to do each year, and I really appreciate how much effort has to go into finding that line that you're going to be above and below. And I was very, very pleased to see that the extra person for the parks got moved up. If that hadn't happened, I was going to make the argument tonight anyway, so you saved me that effort. But I would like to make the argument about the library position. That the library has a number of metrics that they measure themselves for and compare their staffing to, and they are low in terms of staff compared to where they ought to be. And if you gave me a choice, I'd put the library position up, and I'd bring the admin position down. I think that gives us more advantage to the city and helps out where the library is packed every day and has a number of things going on and needs some help. I don't know if anybody else cares to have that discussion, but that would be my argument here.
Well, I just... I like our budget process, and I think the fact that staff sits down with budget heads and department heads and talks about what priorities should be, I think that it's best left to those who manage those departments to determine which ones get funded. So, I think it's a great way to do it. I think that, you know, that our staff is the best staff of any city in the country, as far as I'm concerned, and I think it's because you're able to sit down with department heads and talk about each other's needs, and one is able to say, yeah, we can hold off for a year because we recognize that this may be more important, shows how well you all work together. And so, I appreciate it, and I would think that if the department heads voted on these two positions to be funded, then that's what I would support.
Agreed.
I disagree. I'm just saying, we have in the past, this board up here has moved items up above the line from significantly down the list, because we felt they've been important. I'm just making that... Just making that argument tonight, but there's no support.
I think that's a great... I think that's a great argument, but you have to look, too. The library has its own funds. 1.27 million budget for Parks and Rec total, for everything that Parks and Rec does, is less than 4 million. It's 3.8 million. I mean, or whatever, wherever you want to add in. I think they had another one for a laborer or something of that effect. I mean, the library has a substantial amount for its own budget. I bet they could probably hire somebody if, out of their own budget.
Mm-mm.
They can? Okay.
Anybody else?
You're welcome.
Thanks again.
Thank you all so much.
Great job. Were you trying to steal that, Ron? Ended up in your pocket. Okay. Item B is fire and rescue services and emergency medical services EMS contract review.
Real quick, Mayor and Council, before Brian gets started, I want to commend the efforts of both Brian and Greg, who's sitting right next to him on his left. They've been working tirelessly on this since before January of this year. We know that the current contract comes to an end at the end of this month, and it's been a longstanding relationship that both the city and the VFD truly cherish. Brian's going to give you a brief overview of the proposed changes as we enter a new contract cycle.
And to echo Mo's saying, it's been a collaborative effort on the part of the fire department and also the city, and multiple city departments, including city attorney and administrative services, finance, facilities and IT, and all the chiefs and Greg's position over there at the fire department. So, definitely been a lot of people working tirelessly. So, later on tonight, you'll see proposed for contracts, for new contracts for both fire and EMS. So, just going to give you a brief overview about the significant changes and kind of what brought us to this point. We are ending our current 15-year contract, just come to term. 2004 was the beginning of that, so coming to the end of a current contract with the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department for both fire and EMS services. And based on some other things that have happened, so for EMS and fire, we are looking at going ahead and renewing those contracts. So, historic timeline mainly on the EMS side. In 2017, we knew there was going to be some changes to our EMS structure and how we presented EMS for the city of Friendswood. So, we did a former committee. Mayor was on the committee, and also Steve Rocky was on it at the time. We did that a couple of years ago. After... And later on, in 2017, we were able to present those findings, and later on, 2017 going into 2018, we went out for RFP for EMS services, went through a process of selecting that, and that selection was done for our own Friendswood EMS. In September, we admitted the contract so we could begin billing of 2018, and then we started billing in January of this year. So, some of the significant changes for both contracts. So, one of the big things is we are separating the fire and EMS service into two different contracts. Both will be with the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department, but two separate contracts, not 100%, not together, not in the same contract. One of the main things this contract will allow is for Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department members to focus on delivering the services for those contracts. The old contract had a lot of language for the VFD, did a lot of their own management of their IT services and internet, internet firewall-type stuff, also facilities as well, AC maintenance. They did their own, found their own person to do their work. So, we're in the process... This new contract will allow for that to be more integrated, along with what we're doing now. So, you know, we have a good contract for AC services. We can get a better deal and do all the fire stations, and also take that off their plate for management.
The big push on that is the city is better equipped to handle facilities and fleet, as the volunteer fire department are better equipped to handle the staffing needs for the services being provided. By us focusing on those strengths, we're able to do things a little bit more efficiently on both ends.
Give them more time as well. Also, the new contract will have an annual increase amount. I know in the past, they've come... We've probably, on that DP package, as you'll see a lot of things from the fire department, a lot of times, they would go multiple years without being able to fund increase, small increases to fuel or for equipment cost. The new contract allows for a percent increase for equipment costs, personnel, personnel costs, whether that be medical or pension costs are increased, so they can adjust their budget annually to move around those costs and not have to come back with a long list of DPs every year.
There is a metric included in the contract that bases a lot of that, based on consumer price index fluctuations throughout the year, as well as some other growth pressures that they may see.
And lastly, it addresses the capital, the needs and funding. We've sat down with Katina and her staff to work on a capital model to help fund VFD vehicles, both fire and EMS, so that in the long term, they don't have to worry about that pressure of figuring out where the money's going to come from to fund these vehicles, that we do a joint 15-year plan to outline the vehicles needed to perform the services, and we're able to come up with a plan and provide those vehicles for them. So, some of the changes, significant changes in the EMS side, we'll be going to a model with... We'll have two full-time ambulances in place, and one medic supervisor as well. That'll give... In total, they'll have nine full-time employee staff. So, one good thing for that is that we'll have access to nine staff members in emergency events and stuff like that, that it'll be... They'll be 100% staffed and 100% for the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department. They also continue to use part-time staffing and also volunteers to help run those ambulances as well. Part of the change with that will be that they'll have one ambulance, fire station one, and one ambulance at fire station for running two different districts to balance out the call volume. The initial contract will be three years with two one-year extensions, basically max term of five years. One of the changes from the 15-year model is knowing that we had a lot of changes in that 15 years, so this allows us to come back and look at what those changes are going to be. We know that there's a lot of changes in both fire and EMS, so we did a shorter timeframe so we can come back and adjust, you know, the contract or whatever the model needs to be, so that we don't get into another 15-year gap like that. And then also, it also allows for, like Mo said, some increases for incidentals, so if they make so many calls. We are doing EMS billing, but that is deducted from the amount that we're paying them, so that there's really no growth for them. If they do make 100 or 200 more calls, they weren't capitalizing on any of that increase, so that allows for us to be able to help them with those, the cost incurred. So, that's what that 10,000 for every 100 call is. Questions on the EMS side so far? On the fire side, there's not a whole lot of changes. We've had a day crew and a day captain in place for quite some time. It was actually before the 15-year contract was put in place, so that will continue to stay in effect. They'll have Texas-certified firefighters, and they will be housed at a station one. They're pretty much Monday through Friday, except for city holidays. That contract will be a five-year contract with two years, so max seven-year contract for fire. That's kind of the nutshell. Any questions?
Do you want to expand on why we're going to do two different contracts for the EMS department and the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department, even though it's still within the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department?
Sure. Over the last few years, we've seen a dichotomy of sorts between the two departments. On EMS side, due to state certification requirements, there are fewer and fewer folks able or willing to step up to volunteer. The certifications required to be a volunteer paramedic are the same to be a paid professional, and fewer and fewer folks are stepping up to handle the call volume and the rigors associated with serving on an EMS side. On the fire services side, there's a little bit more flexibility, so we still have a good volunteer pool to provide fire services, and slowly but... good volunteer pool to provide fire services, and slowly but surely, the EMS side has become more of a paid professional staff, and it's fewer and fewer volunteers. Seeing where those costs and those trends are headed, we wanted to give some options, knowing that the two departments aren't necessarily on the trajectory, so we didn't want to commit to a 15-year or a similar timeframe and then put ourselves in a bind if we're unable to continue to operate in the manner that we currently operate under.
Brian, I actually have two questions, if you could go back to the EMS chart, and I know you said, are there any more questions? And I didn't say anything.
Sorry.
The first one is the $10,000 per 100 calls that are over 3,000 calls. Is there any history there such that we can kind of anticipate roughly what dollar amount we're talking about? And it's not exact science, but.
We know that EMS, the EMS calls are continually to increase annually, where the fire calls are staying pretty level.
Constant.
So, we're probably looking at, I would say probably, you know, at least hitting that mark every year, as far as close to 100 additional calls annually at this point, if not more, but.
Okay. So, you're talking $10,000 there?
Right, $10,000, maybe, maybe 200 calls at the max, but it's not been increasing that much, but it is increasing.
And I will add to that, despite the institution of EMS billing, we haven't seen a, any slowing down of EMS calls for service.
I remember when y'all did the presentation, that the EMS was going like this and fire was.
And we have just finished up some development to some senior living and others, so it has, it will continue to impact.
Okay. And then one other question actually goes to the top of that chart with your staffing. Was that pretty close to what we were staffing? And I know it was a blend of paid and volunteer, but the, the nine full-time employees.
Oh, no, they were only staffing one ambulance before, so now we're staffing two.
So, we're almost doubling our workforce then?
And then, we only had three full-time staff members prior to this.
Okay.
So, we've added six full-time staff.
Okay.
The complement of those three were also part-time positions that were filling in hours. So, even though we had three full-time positions, we had a lot of slots being filled by part-time professionals. This was a response to the RFP that the city underwent in 2018, and this is the timeline by which they were going to get fully staffed to provide full-time services on EMS.
Okay.
So, the, I know that the supervisors were riding up into the, the ambulance box, riding in conjunction with either volunteers or part-timers quite a bit, but this will actually give us two fully, two fully operational ambulances, plus with that supervisor, we could probably make a third with fire department staff or other volunteers, so gives it a little more availability.
Okay. Thank you. I know y'all done a lot of homework on this, and it's a lot of data to cover, so thank you for your efforts, the whole team.
Just one last question. When we get calls and like, let's say it's from Manville or Alvin or Webster, or we're helping other communities and municipalities, are we billing for those services now too?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Now that we have established process, we can bill for all those services.
Just out of curiosity, Brian, how many ambulances do we own?
We, we own three.
Three, okay.
We'll finally be able to put people on, all three of them, when we need to, though.
Okay. Any other questions? Good presentation. Thanks, Brian.